I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Sir.
Any discussion on tonight's agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May 17th meeting.
Roger.
Any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. And that brings us to Regina.
Alright, it's a long one. Very long. Yeah. The boys are playing right now in their first round of sectionals for baseball in Lyndenville. The softball team plays tomorrow in Bradford and track sectionals are on Saturday. The drama club was able to add their season with their annual picnic on Sunday. Nice to add the season with normal seats. We played Temple Hill in the fall, and I lost, which is kind of upset. Um, the chorus concert was released on Friday. The show choir concert finished filming today. And the band Ian Orfushe recordings were made on Saturday and will be released soon. The marching band at Kelly Garden also had a makeshift parade at the track for Memorial Day. It's a really nice weather, like it wasn't common. The voice recitals are Wednesday for high school and Thursday for middle school, both at 6:30. And Wednesday is also junior and senior awards that aren't as far as like, I gotta steal this spot. On May 26th, Geneseeo Central School invited local artist Andy Rata to come and speak during lunch on our virtual day. This opportunity was made possible through the Geneseeo Central Education Fund. Andy did two Zoom sessions with students, one at middle school lunch and one at high school lunch. And he shared his artwork, his story, and the places he's traveled throughout his life. The sessions were very well attended with 39 students in the first session and 22 at the second. The entire Zoom call was recorded and made available to students via email and classroom. And if anyone else is interested in seeing them, um, please contact Mr. A or Ms. Adams. This year, like many other traditions, the normal presentation of the K-12 artwork had to be modified. And in the winter, unsure about what the spring would look like, the art department made the decision to photograph artwork and prepare it for a virtual format. And the link to the online art show can be found on the Geneseeo Art social media pages. Congratulations to Jacob French and Harper Intiuti for their awards in this year's Digi competition. Jacob French finished first in the 10th through 12th grade category for video as a senior. And Harper, who is in eighth grade, finished second in the seventh through ninth grade audio category. And Mrs. Miller has their submissions.
Billy?
Yes, Dad?
Were you thinking about eating that cookie?
Uh, yeah. Is that a problem?
Yes! I claimed that cookie yesterday, remember?
Hey, uh, everyone, uh, this cookie's mine. Okay? So, so don't eat it.
Uh... No, I don't think I do.
Well, I don't care. It's mine.
I know, Dad, but it just looks so highly appealing to the taste buds.
Billy? Get out of the kitchen!
Seamus, have you ever really wanted something, but the powers that may be have wanted nothing more than to keep you from having it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how I feel right now. What is it that you want?
A donkey.
Yeah, I know how you... Wait, what?
A donkey.
Hee-haw, hee-haw.
Why would you want...
Alright, my offspring, I am going to sleep in order to preserve my body. Good night.
Alright, Dad, good night. Seamus, this is my chance.
Ho! Where do you think you're going, young man? Now I don't want to have to tell you one more time. Get in here! Get in bed! Stay away from my c- (screaming)
And Jacob will be going to ID for film production itself, or... And then the next one is Harper's audio.
Find the perfect song for your video in five seconds. Go to artlist.io.
Alright, so congratulations to Jacob. We've got still a half report left. The AP Senior Art Show is up for viewing. They held an artist stroll earlier this evening for family and friends. And they would like to invite all to enjoy their pieces that will be displayed in the foyer until the end of this week. Speaking of APs, all AP exams are over, thank goodness, and we are headed into finals. During the month of April, NHS made spring reading cards for the senior citizens of Portland, the States. And they also met on May 22nd to do spring cleanup at the Temple Hill Cemetery. They worked for the morning picking up sticks and breaking up leaves, getting the cemetery ready for Memorial Day weekend. NHS just recently held a wish list drive for the Teresa House that our NHS president and vice president delivered there today. Student Council is also holding their final spirit week of the year this week. And lastly, the yearbooks came this morning, second period. I got a call for this occasion. We both find this screen. We went down to the dungeons and got all the yearbooks. Um, and the 2022 yearbook staff started working after school for next group book. That's it. I've got... Are there any questions?
Well done.
Thank you, Regina. Excellent report.
I'm gonna show with six fingers.
I was.
Yeah.
Who's Andrea Song?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi, Andreas.
Y'all having a good evening?
We are.
The eighth grade is taking a field trip on Thursday, June 17th. They are going to the Geneseeo Movie Theater and then to Menahans for lunch and to enjoy the fun activities. This should be a great way to end the school year with some fun. Second, Student Council has put together a final spirit week this ye- this week, consisting of some fun dress-up days from middle school. Today was Hawaiian Day, tomorrow is Show Your Pride Day in honor of Pride Month. Wednesday is PJ Day, Thursday is Decades Day, the sixth grade will be the seventies, the seventh will be the eighties, and the eighth grade will be the nineties. And of course, Friday is blue and white in honor of school spirit. Mrs. Calzer put together a nice slideshow highlighting the recent performance of the Geneseeo Marching Band. Marching... Uh, Memorial Day performance of 2021. Here's the slideshow now. And Mr. A has put together a short presentation highlighting a couple amazing students who won awards in this year's Digi competition. Then let Ms. Miller play the file that Mr. A sent to her.
We did see it. That was things that...
Oh. And for sports, uh, the two modified baseball teams, the softball teams and the track teams, they're doing very well. And does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Andreas.
Thank you.
That was excellent.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Um, before we move on to the next event, um, I just want to take a minute. I have a brief statement I'd like to make. Some people here know and some people don't know, but this will, this is my second-to-last meeting as your board president and sitting on the board. So I wanted to take a moment tonight to say a few words because I won't see a lot of people who are sitting here tonight again after this, this board meeting. It has been my distinct pleasure and honor to serve on this board for the last eight years. And I've been so fortunate to work beside David, Mike, Craig, Julie, Chris, and Kathy. And I'm grateful for their unwavering support. One thing I've learned while being on the board is that everything a board member does, every decision we make and every penny we spend affects a human being, like those behind me. It has often been a daunting task and decisions we have made have never been made lightly. I'm so proud of the work we've done together these past eight years. We've seen a transportation facility built that we badly needed for two decades. We undertook the hiring and installation of a new superintendent of schools, business official, elementary principal, special education administrator, as well as countless number of new faculty and staff. We have tenured some of the best teachers to be found anywhere. We built sensible and thoughtful budgets balancing the needs of the school and maintaining the integrity of our educational and extracurricular offerings with what is fair and reasonable for the taxpayers of our district. Our decisions have not always been popular, but they have always been made thoughtfully and with the best of intentions. We are elected to our positions, but we are volunteers, giving of our time and talent to try and do what is best for the students in this district, solely because we care deeply for them, their families, the staff, faculty, administrators, and our community at large. I'm so thankful and grateful to my fellow board members for their steadfastness, diligence, hard work, tenacity, and integrity. It has been a pleasure to serve with all of you. I'd also like to thank Cindy and the administrative team for all the years I've worked side by side with them. Behind the scenes and at public sessions, you're an amazing group of hardworking individuals who always put the needs of your students, their families, your staff, and community first. You work hard and often long hours and are not thanked nearly enough for all that you do. Our district and our students are so fortunate to have all of you. I am grateful for the patience you've shown me and for working with me over the years on a variety of issues in a professional, thoughtful, and caring manner. I will truly miss working together, but I know that what we have started, you will continue, and that GCS and its students will benefit from it in the future. To the faculty and staff, I want to thank you all for what you do each and every day to help our children succeed and to reach their personal goals and to achieve their dreams. The dedication, commitment, support, and love you provide to our students and their families is what makes Geneseeo Central School special. Our children and their families are lucky to have you, and I know you will continue to provide our kids with what they need to feel loved and supported and to lead GCS prepared for the future. And finally, I want to say goodbye to the kids. The kids I've so enjoyed getting to know over the years, to watch grow and learn. And I've loved every play, game, performance, art show, recital, and every presentation I have seen over the course of my time on the board. And as a parent who had children who attended school here, I'm sure I will be back from time to time and see many of the kids around town, but it won't be quite the same. And it's because of them that I wanted to be on the board. It was for them that I put in the long hours and spent the time that I did trying to do what I could while I was here to make their experiences here the best they could be. All one can hope for when you leave a role like this is that you made a small difference. Did your best to be a positive role model, to leave things hopefully a little better than what they were when you arrived. I hope I succeeded in that. Thank you to everyone who supported me during my tenure, and I wish everyone the very best in the future. I will always be a proud alumna, and as a community member, I will continue to be supportive of Geneseeo Central School's mission, vision, and goals. And at this time, I would like to invite some of my very favorite students back here to come on up and tell us what you got with your presentation.
And as an update from a Snapchat that says not done yet, I'm gonna ask our boys one and up to get to number two. See that's a number of...
Thank you for the update. He didn't want to stop there, what?
Right.
Yeah, part. So, um, as part of my update, one of the things that I had shared a little bit about at the beginning of this year, and you've heard from both Mr. Billy and myself, is a little bit about restorative practices. Um, so as a district, we're committed to making sure that we continue to support students academically, but also to social emotionality. So making sure that we're helping them with self-management and self-awareness and building relationships. So, um, one of the focus areas this year was on, um, building community in classrooms. So we have some of our staff members participate in some ongoing professional learning in partnership with the Center for District Settlement. So my update this evening is two-part. Um, I invited Mr. Hazard, and he has invited some of the sixth grade students to demonstrate a little bit about restorative practices. There's a range of restorative practices, and really, we're focusing and discussing tonight the community building circles, which is something that Mr. Hazard has implemented into his classroom regularly and wanted people to experience and be able to see a little bit of what happens with Mr. Hazard and community circles, or what he refers to as real rock Fridays. So I'm gonna turn it over to him for our students to demonstrate that. And then after, we're gonna discuss with the students, so maybe go outside, enjoy, um, the weather, or do some homework, whatever fits in their schedule, and, and turn it over to some people that are with us via Zoom from the Center for District Settlement. So, Mr. Hazard, thank you, and thanks for being...
I could give a ten-minute present on SCL for half of you, but, and it would be not meaningful. These guys will teach you what we actually do. And Mrs. Miller came to me last year about this. We went to some training, and then it kind of took off because the kids took off with it. They enjoy talking. Many of you have probably been, these guys, hopefully, many of you have been on Facebook. Maybe you're on the election of 2020 or 2016. And adults say we don't like each other. Or they, they block each other. But what we're trying to do is we actually try to have discourse. We have conversation. And we do it in a respectful way, so we start off and we just, we talk and we share, we listen. And sometimes we don't agree on everything, and sometimes we just laugh. But in a year and a half of doing this, we've talked from everything, from vulnerability with Brené Brown, to social justice, to dreams, to cancer, to politics, to celebrities dying, to mindset, to time, to COVID, to being scared, all of these different things. And what I found is, the more you talk to kids about it, the more I learn about it, and the better they feel, because there's a lot of anxiety at school around a lot of these issues. And I see images on the news, and you see images at school, you see it on TikTok. And if you have kids, you know exactly what I'm talking about. I have two kids, fourteen and ten, and they go home and they're watching TikTok, and they think it's great. This is a great place to have these conversations that come from, from TikTok, from Snapchat, from the Gram, all of these different things. And so these guys are awesome. And so these guys, every Friday, I try to find something that I think they're gonna... Because when they get into us, sometimes we talk for twenty, and sometimes, honestly, it's a whole entire period. And amazingly, we're still gonna get through all our content. It's really weird. If you give these guys like time to talk and make the word meaningful, it's amazing how much you get through. So really, I just want to be authentic. If I can use that, it should be authentic and be real. And some of the things they share this year, that just pull me away, and I would just encourage them to keep doing it. And these guys are all volunteers, so there's nothing attached that there's not a cookie cake at the end. There'll be a thank you card, but they're here because they want to be here. And there were actually a bunch of other kids who wanted to be here tonight, or they had a soccer game or something like that. So if they have, you know, eleven, sixth graders show up on Monday at a board meeting, I'm like, you guys, we recognize that, because there's... So this video, this TED Talk is great. TED Talks are good for this stuff. This guy goes fifteen minutes, and I wish we had all fifteen minutes, but, you know, this is Matthews. What show's on tonight? Is there a show on tonight? I don't know. We got stuff to do. We got lots of fun stuff to do today. How do you accept rejection? How do you embrace it? All of us have been rejected at one point in our life. Not talking about my love life, Bennett. They're not gonna go there today. Dad, not knowing us, here us. So we have to learn in, in life, you are going to be rejected. It may be at the college of your choice. It may be the travel team you want to play for, and maybe trying out for the place. All of these things come with rejection. Kids fear rejection. When a four-year-old is a dog, I fear rejection. How do you get better at parts around all of them? This guy, this guy had some ideas. This guy wandered around. We aren't watching the whole thing, but he tried and blogged a hundred different ways to be rejected. And he taped them, and when he found out, it was rejected, possibly.
Well, one thing for sure, I could be a better leader. I could be a better person. I cannot let that six-year-old keep dictating my life anymore. I have to put him back to his place. So this is where I went online and looked for help. Google was my friend. I searched, "How do I overcome the fear of rejection?" I came up with a bunch of, um, psychology articles about where the fear and pain are coming from. And then I came up with a bunch of rah-rah inspirational articles about, "Don't take it personally, just overcome it." Who doesn't know that? But why was I still so scared? Then I found this website by luck. It's called rejectiontherapy.com. Rejection therapy was this game invented by this Canadian entrepreneur. His name is Jason Conley. And it's basically, the idea is, for thirty days, you go out and look for rejection. And every day, get rejected at something, and by the end, you desensitize yourself from the pain. And I love that idea. I said, "You know what? I'm gonna do this, and I'll film myself getting rejected a hundred days." And I came up with my own rejection ideas, and I'll make a video blog out of it. And so here's what I did. This is what the blog looked like. Um, day one. Borrow a hundred dollar from, borrow a hundred dollar from stranger. So this is where I went to where I was working. I, uh, came downstairs and saw this big guy sitting behind a desk, you know, he, he looked like a security guard. So I just approached him, and I was just going, I was just walking, and that was the longest walk in my life. I just had the back of my neck standing up. I was sweating, and my heart was pounding. And I got there and said, "Hey, um, sir, can I borrow a hundred dollar from you?" And he looked up, he's like, "No." "Why?" And I just said, I said, "No, I'm sorry." Then I turned around and just ran. I felt so embarrassed. But because I filmed myself, so that night I was watching myself getting rejected, I just saw how scared I was. I looked like this kid in Sixth Sense. I saw dead people. But then I saw this guy, he, you know, he, he wasn't that menacing. He was chubby, lovable guy, you know? And, and, and he even asked me why. In fact, he invited me to explain myself. And I could have said many things. I could have explained. I could have negotiated. I, I didn't do any of that. All I did was run. I felt, wow, this is like the microcosm of my life. Every time I feel the slightest rejection, I would just run as fast as I could. And you know what? The next day, no matter what happens, I'm not gonna run. I'll stay engaged. Day two, request a burger.
The next day, he goes, he gets a burger refill. I'm sure all of you asked for one. You're not? And he has a, it's a thing for, well?
Daily sense.
Daily. And so what I want to really focus on, and this guy's great, we'll come up on, on TED Talk, it really gets very fascinating. Because I wanted, if I was just having this in my classroom, I'd be like, I, you know, I'm really curious about what he said about running away from rejection. Or why. And so can we put the slide back on, because they had their five questions on there? What they do is we just go around and they talk about, so I really figured out, you need to give them props. It's not really helpful to just be like, hey, let's talk.
Burger refill.
Have some ideas. He actually asked, and he has a different video. He asked for like the, of the Olympic signal or symbol and donuts. And he went to a Krispy Kreme, and the lady's like, "Dude, I can do that." I was like, "How am I gonna do that?" Fifteen minutes later, she comes out and she's got all these donuts in there, like, you know?
It's amazing.
Amazing!
If you go out and ask, there's, there's always a possibility that somebody's not gonna say no.
If you go out and ask, maybe they don't say no.
Maybe, maybe it's a yes.
Why do you think that is?
Even if your request is crazy, it's still usually doable. A lot of the things that the guy asks in the board are doable requests. I mean, maybe they're requests that aren't exactly appealing to the other person or aren't the best thing that they might want to do, but... I don't know. It's just...
I think you do know. Anybody want to build off Will's answer? Jayden, I know you had some thoughts.
I wonder why I do the rejection? Uh, yeah, I do definitely, and I think everyone would probably agree that at some point, in some way you do, um, of your rejection. I know the main reason why I do that is for the embarrassment perspective, to me, about everyone around you, like on the eye. Always just assuming that everyone's touching you for, um, kind of being rejected. From like, maybe peers, people older than you, younger, just all the, basically, embarrassment of the response is to me being rejected. And it's also for it's embarrassing for yourself, in part.
Jean, are you saying at sixth grade, you could be embarrassed?
Yeah.
By like a comparison or something, or a teacher? Like your teacher doing this to you right now?
No, really.
Really?
Is that...
Odd, I know. Crazy. Maddie?
I was gonna say, when you do rejection, I would say I definitely do. I do a lot of things through the rejection. Um, before I ask a question, I always tell myself a few and pretend that they're asking a question I was gonna ask. And if they say, if I was gonna say no, I won't ask the question. I won't escape, because I'm scared of what they're gonna say.
Do you think after watching this video, maybe you're more apt to maybe, maybe ask?
I think that maybe it's actually a quick one. He does actually give his request. I think that will take march and be rejected.
Jean?
Um, for number four, how do you decide, know, do you guess? Is even in the beginning, one that we just showed, they, he was asked why. So he could, he had the opportunity to explain himself. So if he said it was for more of a good cause, going for something, and you could pay it back, then the chances could have been more of a yes. But the guy probably thought he was doing something bad with it. So if with that, he didn't wanna give up the hundred dollars.
So you think if he explained why you're saying this?
Yeah.
You agree with that, Bennett? Because you're kind of not it. Why would you agree with that?
Um, because I feel like that would work, because it shows something about the... Not, not much of it, but, um, they, then they can see why, not just have what you did to their asking. So that they can kind of assume why. So you figure out, they really have a lot of money. Also, this is the slam. There's nothing to the law that
Somebody bought a ticket to the deep pool. Very nice. Alex, you've been patient.
So building off what she says, whenever I ask a question, I don't usually, I think that, but I'm like, anything can happen. But like mostly.
So kind of like what Will was saying?
Yeah.
Like you just don't know unless you.
You don't know unless you try. And then going off of what Jamie said, with the do, how do you turn no into a yes? I says like, if somebody asks why, why is one of the most crucial learning these points of view? Because it could change anything. Like when he asked for $100, like he could be leaving it for like something like somebody who's like really sick, which then it's a, he probably would have given it to him. But like if he wanted to like buy candy, probably would not have given it.
Yeah, what's the intention behind, okay? What's the intention behind the why? Right, Andrew, you wanted to?
I would with two, I would say recently I have tried to make it my personal goal to probably do more things that will end up in me getting rejected. But I still want the chances that not happening.
So why is that a goal for you?
I have, I have struggled with like confronting people for a few years now, so you know.
Do you find when you confront people, it's not that bad?
Now that I've started doing it more, it's become a lot more easy, but.
And that's the whole premise of this guy, right? Is the more you do it, the less scary it actually becomes. Did you agree with that, Will?
Yes.
There's a lot.
The more people say no to you, the more you're going to get used to it. And it's not going to be like that feeling where it's like you ask for something and they say no. And then it's like, it feels bad. But then if you do that enough, you're going to be like, it's a perfectly normal answer. Just no.
That's not a big deal. Jahan, you can't say no to this. Can you go? Kind of tells a story, right? There's a story. Once you find out the story, a little more empathetic to that, Olivia.
So answer, do you run away from income or meaning? If I have a chance to mean it, I will definitely take it. Like, no, honestly. If someone, if I were to ask like even a stupid question, I would just be like, why not? Like, why don't, why can't I? Someone asking why, so is ask why to them, see what happens.
What's the harm? Couple of quick ones, I know this is time, so this is what happens. This is why some days it goes for a while. Maddie?
I think you asked why that's a little bit. Sometimes you might feel personal if someone is definitely beating you up. They don't like me, oh, they just probably don't trust me. But if that's why, you really know the real reason behind the why. I have no, uh, so I know that's not because they don't like you, it's for your dog. You never get to destroy the dog.
Great.
Maddie's number three. One way to not to do that is taking it personal. I know that for actually experiencing myself. If you take things personal, you kind of get a rock in your mind and get down on yourself. You think badly when, that's not the way to like, and you're getting in your head and you shouldn't do that. You should be thinking about, one way I had to do is think about just where I got in and think about how far you've accomplished and taking their rejection as a way to accomplish more and learn from it and change.
You're so worried about getting in your head. I've been there in my head. Like it's tricky. It's so hard. We talk ourselves out of so many things, Bennett.
Number three, how would I deal with rejection earlier? Um, I would have to thought a little bit and just say, it's not really a big deal. I would see it as a learning opportunity because I would see all of my mistakes and think about where to do better. Next time I think I'm in a similar situation, I would do it as a
I like the word learn. Let's leave it on that, learning opportunities. Okay, Andrew.
So to add on what was what Bennett said is usually when, when I, after, after I get rejected or something like that, my, i- in my brain, I kind of resort to immediately moving on and thinking up nothing of it. So then I, I just think of it as a missed opportunity. And I technically, everybody has millions of opportunities in their entire life. So one, one can ruin all of them.
Even Michael Jordan missed some shots. These guys are sixth graders, right? Well done. Thank you very much.
That was great. Happy birthday, Bennett.
Thank you for coming.
So if you've got a little sense of the discourse that students have learned, I can add to, I want to add on to not only sharing, but also listening to what others are saying. So one example, circles can have a lot of different ways that they go about. When you start early, if you really like a need to entry, you're not jumping right into feelings necessarily. But that's how Mr. Hazard kind of took some of the things they learned and implemented in his classroom. So that's on the agenda, like I mentioned, even partnering with the Center for Dispute Settlement. And I've been working with three individuals pretty closely this year with a small group from the middle school, high school, and some members of our elementary building. And so I've asked them to join us tonight to share a little bit about the work that we've done and where we'd like to report with the partnership with them for the upcoming year. So it is Linda, Clayton, and Diana who are with us. So I will just screen and they can unmute. And again, they're just doing a brief overview and wrap up a little bit about this sort of practice.
Thank you so much, Stephanie, for, and all of you for having us this evening. I, I am by the title there in my box, Lynda Bell, with the Center for Dispute Settlement. What a wonderful introduction and what a wonderful way to see and to know that we are absolutely in the right place with the kind of work we do. We knew that from the work we've been doing with your staff, but to see tonight's engagement and inclusiveness was just for us, a really treat, wonderful treat. So thank you for having us and thank you for allowing us to witness that. I really want to thank Mr. Mr. Hazard, who was part of what we did these, these past few months for actually demonstrating what we're here to talk about. Great demonstration. A little bit about the Center for Dispute Settlement, and then I'm going to like Clayton and Diana. I don't know how they're going to do it. Talk about the work we've done and hope, hopefully where we're going to go with this. The Center for Dispute Settlement is an alternative dispute center. We're part of a large network across the state of New York. And just to kind of do it in everyday language, if you peeled off all the layers of what we actually do, at the heart of our work is what we call community building. That, that's really who we are. We believe that healthy relationships are the very foundation of healthy communities. And so we work with individuals and organizations, institutions, and systems to support this kind of people-to-people connection through things like dialogue that gets us talking to and connecting with one another. Through mediations for those times when we become disconnected and find ourselves in conflict. And through healing-centered work that supports us in getting back to our best selves and reconnecting to others and to society. Again, we're here today to connect with you as we hope to embark on a strategic partnership with the GCSD to enhance your efforts, as you've already seen, to create that peaceable and inclusive school culture and climate that we see you working on. This partnership is under our restorative initiatives. And again, we do this work in schools, community organizations, justice systems, government agencies, and municipalities. And Clayton is going to take over now and kind of explain to you a little bit about what that RP, which is restorative practices, and RJ, which is restorative justice work, looks like. And the role it plays in this very important work of building relationships and community. So Clayton?
Yeah, thanks, Linda. Hello, everybody. My name is Clayton Lyons. I obviously work for the Center for Dispute Settlement. Thanks to Stephanie for inviting us here. Thanks to all of you for your engagement. So, you know, in my brief comments, I'll just share a little bit more about what RPRJ includes and then really why we feel it's such an important priority for you and we all to focus on. So as you just saw from Mr. Hazard's presentation, restorative work is based in dialogue and is based in conversation. It's about conversations which can be incredibly difficult, like rejection, which is something I certainly don't talk about often and definitely did not talk about as a sixth grader. Restorative practices are really a philosophy, as well as an approach to community building and harm response. And we already saw from Stephanie's first slide that restorative work is done along a spectrum with some of them being circles, other examples including mediation, some being one-on-one work, which we call conflict coaching. Other work just happening through social emotional learning being prioritized. Restorative work is all about intentionally making the time for relationship building within the school community. So that includes in classes, it includes among faculty, staff, and administrators, and it can even include parents. And we believe prioritizing relationships is such an important key to making peaceful communities and to engaging students because it's only through relationships that we can hold ourselves accountable. And it's only through relationships that we feel, students especially, are able to most be themselves. And in this time, now than, now than really any other, we know that as you return from COVID, we all need community like ever before. And so that's why we think this time is really right for bringing this type of work into your district and really into every other districts who's willing to work with us. And so a big part of restorative work is harm response. So restorative work and restorative justice holds that conflict is an opportunity for personal and community growth. You know, it's really important that we have relationships first and foremost. That way there is something to return to when there's relationship breakdown. In restorative work, harm responses or restorative justice seeks to achieve accountability by allowing those most directly affected by a situation to have a say in what comes next. We feel that those who have a say can feel empowered in that process and have their own healing. And we feel there is no accountability like that which comes in relationship with others. You know, some folks often wonder how we can ever hold folks accountable without the type of consequences they know schools to enforce very regularly, the likes of which include suspension. And the answer I give is that really the evidence has proven, and so have testimonials, that when someone is forced to really hear how they have harmed someone else and hear what that impact includes, and then make things right with an established plan, that's where the most personal growth comes. And that's what's most difficult for us to do as individuals. So it definitely matches social emotional learning and it matches a lot of the other initiatives that you've seen on this call so far today. A brief word on, on why we believe RP and RJ to be so important. I guess for one, it's effective, right? So this work has been proven time and time again to increase student achievement, improve student attendance, grow student and parent engagement within the school community. RPRJ has also been proven to reduce dropouts and decrease the need in the use of class discipline, all of which increases student success in school and certainly later on in life. Restorative justice as a response, it reduces recidivism, especially recidivism for violent offenses and serious harm. And we feel restorative work really empower students like we just saw and connects to initiatives, like I said, social emotional learning, as well as diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so over the past year, we've really been able to work with a lot of staff in your district in the social emotional learning focus group. During our time together, we introduced the basics of restorative practices and restorative justice. We offered experiential learning in the form of circles and we planned for the future. And an overwhelming majority of teachers who participated in our workshops shared that they felt the experience was worthwhile. They felt they would recommend the experience to other educators and to other folks in the community, not just educators. And they felt that they learned a substantial amount, even in the short time we had together. We had one workshop session per month during which, in an hour, which is not that long, we covered a range of material, including the basics of restorative work, including a lot of the why and including a lot of the how. And in the next year, the agreement that we've reached with your district and which I hope you'll all be on board with and help us out as we go is to train a cohort of faculty and staff who can then facilitate circles as educators in classrooms with each other as colleagues and certainly track all of the progress that we make. This progress includes the rate at which students feel connected to their classmates and feel connected to the broader school community. This progress will hopefully include increased student achievement, as I've mentioned, as well as decreased truancy. And as we follow this cohort of folks, we're going to offer additional learning and workshops for other educators, whomever wants to be included, and make a strategic plan for how this can really be implemented more fully as we go and how we can do this in a realistic manner that doesn't reinvent the wheel, but builds off of all the great work you're already doing. So all of this to say, we're here to help you out with whatever we can. And we're very appreciative of the opportunity to do this work together and we're certainly here for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to jump in real quick and just to say an extra thank you to Stephanie and Craig for inviting us in. It has been wonderful getting to know both of you and just the environment of Geneseo is ready for this. And I'm excited to work with everyone on the local contacts in Geneseo. And I also am so excited about our group of teachers who are willing to step up and be the champions for restorative justice at Geneseo. So I look forward to seeing many of your faces as I'm coming in to the building more often. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing and staying on and that you also were able to see the small group of sixth graders. We'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, like I said, I know that was long, but just wanted to give people a clear understanding what's happening in the classroom and where we're going with that work. So we'll have to check now for given questions for the meeting.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Stephanie.
You know, as I, as I sat through and watched the students go through that practice of their restorative circle, it really made me think about what we've accomplished this year. We reopened in some conditions that school has never had to face, society's never had to face. And it was a lot of hard work and every single staff member here would have been well within their rights to figure out the instructional component of their room and their classroom and leave it there. And they didn't. Throughout one of the most difficult years in education, time and time again, we're hearing these amazing stories of what our staff is doing for our students. And it's, and it's crossed the entire spectrum of our district from fine arts to what they're doing in athletics to really building on that social emotional learning curriculum and, and how to deal with, with rejection. I, I see that headline of rejection. I see the word and my, my, my chest tightens because no one likes rejection. But man, if I had had a conversation like this, in fact, Mr. Hazard, if you could bring those kids back, if I ever have to do another reopening plan.
Yeah.
I might need to talk to them if we publicize it, okay? There was a little bit of rejection when we did our reopening. But seriously, I, I really hope everyone can reflect on everything that we've accomplished this year. It's truly, truly been amazing to watch what our staff and students have done this year. It's, it's something I couldn't be more proud of. And this was just one example of, of the hard work that's been happening in our district.
I'd like to thank Paul. That was fantastic. I really, I mean, amazing to have the kids.
Hear that come out of young kids' mouths.
They're very good. And Carly's keeping that, sounds like a science teacher, keep second like at the next level, which they're great. So they do their real top Friday and Friday. They're very good and hardly keeping that. Sounds like a science teacher to me, second level, which they're great. So they do their real top Friday and Friday.
That's great. Thank you very much. Are you up, Cal?
Very brief. So that's actually a picture that I just took. This afternoon, I get four friends and actually they were recognized for leadership by their teacher because. They were helping others on the field trip. They were helping pick up. They went to the Livingston County Museum. And they were so proud to come down and show us their whole blue cards for leadership. So the teacher writes a little note on the back. For what they were recognized for. So you can just go right to the next slide. Basically, I just was trying to, I really wanted to make sure, as Cindy said, there's so much that's been happening this year. But I just wanted to update you on the spring cafeteries in elementary. And I'm not gonna read through them all. There's just been. Already so many things that the teachers want to do for students and our students are just loving it today. We actually had our remote third and fourth graders that worked with Mrs. Mary. They actually came back into the building and she sent me a picture because she said, I've never seen kids so excited to eat cafeteria food. And she sent me a picture and they were just so excited and they all had matching t-shirts and they were excited to be out in the playground. Some of the field trips we took, our first graders, well, our first grade teachers arranged for that trip for them to go to Stony Brook. And I was fortunate to join them. The kids loved it. We had bowling happening, picnics at Highland Park, the Veterans Memorial Park. The Hassel's teachers took our students to bowling, to the library to get pizza. They had a picnic out at the log cabin down on Main Street. The Zomobile's coming. We have field day with our, because that department's putting that on. And we're really gonna try to make it a special, special time for our fifth graders who have missed the whale watch again. So they, they have a bunch of special events planned, the little field trips that are happening, their final walkthrough. But all the while, I can't stress enough, the students are engaged. There's still, you know, there is a sense of urgency, probably more so than ever this year with the academics, but. You wouldn't, you can sense it, but you wouldn't know it in the sense that the teachers have made this such a warm and welcoming learning environment for our students. We did just finish all of our spring assessments and all of those things you see on the bottom left, that's data that we'll be using. And we've already started to look at it in regard to seeing where our students came to us at the beginning of this year. And where they'll be at the end of this school year. I just wanted publicly, you know, say that we will be celebrating Katrina and Elaine who are leaving the elementary building. After many years, I did put their picture in our last little newsletter. I know that all of you are aware. I'm not sure if everybody is. Erin One Yardner is heading off to be the elementary principal at Alexander Central School District. And I'm really excited because she'll still be a part of our posse and I'll see her at my monthly principal meetings. I'm very excited that Kate Mills, who's a one-term sub, is joining us at fourth grade and Catherine Edwards, who has been with us all year. Billy and the turnee lead at kindergarten is coming in as a second grade teacher. We break down tomorrow, I'll be interviewing all day for our reading AIS position and then on Wednesday. Stephanie and I will be doing the final rounds for our special education teacher. And I didn't publicly think, I'm not, I don't think I was at that March meeting, but. And I think Jen even said it, the amazing teachers that we have on staff. And we do have a lot of new teachers in our elementary and the most recent to get tenure, Kristi Fryer, who's now Christine Marine, I should have put. Emily Kane, who's been out since February, a maternity leave. Jenna Jones, who's going to be Jenna Sintora. In July, so we're gonna have two Sintores in the building. And yeah, I've got a child that's gonna think she's my daughter. So I told her she's in charge of the building and then actually her to one of our speech leaders there, so. And then Stephanie, you can just click if you're ever interested in seeing more of what's happening, if you go to the elementary home page. On almost every day, I tweet different pictures with little captions and if you just scroll down. The other day, I just took right there, I just took a walk through the building and I. We have a retired AP bio teacher from Webster that's one of our teacher scouts that came in and had kids. Working, looking at insects under microscopes and then I keep scrolling. I went into Mrs. Spire's room and kids were looking at owl pellets and I just, I felt like I was in rooms with scientists. They were just so engaged. And so anyways, you're always welcome to look at that and there's a combination of a lot of different things with our whole group, but also with our academics, so.
I have a quick question. I know it didn't happen last year. I don't know that it's allowed to happen this year. Are you guys gonna be able to do the senior walkthrough?
You know, I just saw another school that did that and I kind of, because everything's so busy, I can talk to Mike about it.
Cause I think that'd be so special if you could have senior kids. I know, I don't know, I mean, but they're just a small enough class and maybe they could just go outside and I don't know.
I can talk to him. Yeah, I just, I kind of.
I understand if you can. I just know that we did it like two years ago and I know how special that was to do the, yeah.
So yeah, I just, I just thought of that because I saw somebody did it, but I think they did it outside. So it's a hit, it's a touch base with Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. And thank you, Stephanie, for doing dual roles here. Impressive. Well done.
Now, I know we've been hearing about students' work. We've been hearing about the greater curriculum work. And we've seen fan pictures and how we're doing athletics. But now I'm gonna talk about mask updates. And so I know you're on the edge of your seats for that. But the reason I wanna talk about the, the process is. I wanna give you the timeline and how things have happened, rolled out, not been communicated, been communicated. So stuff our first slide, on June 4th, I thought I was being. Positive thinking and trying to head issues off. I said, you know, we're gonna have warm weather this week. Some of the students wearing their masks outdoors with the heat and humidity, you know, we need to look at having the possibility of kids not wearing their masks outside. So our school positioned Dr. Collins. I drafted a letter, I sent it to him, he said, this is perfect. You know, based on the fact that we is, we were using the original terms from our reopening plan. Masks would be worn until determined not to be tolerable. So during the heat and humidity, it wouldn't be tolerable and while they're outside, they could remove their mask. And while indoors, they would still have their mask on and it may be required. So I'm thinking, I'm ahead of it. I'm informing the community, we're going. And then at two o'clock on June 4th, we receive a letter from. The New York State Department of Health Commissioner. It's to the CDC. And in this letter, it talked about aligning the mask requirements with the camp requirements. That stated, kids, whether they're vaccinated or not, could take their mask off indoors and outdoors. So quickly, the headlines blew up that masks are optional in New York State's schools starting Monday. And if you looked at the news on Saturday morning, that's all they were covering is that it's over, the masks are off. And here we go. So, so the next slide stuff. So what did that letter say? It basically said that indoors masks will strongly be encouraged but are not required for students, campers and staff, teachers, counselors who are not fully vaccinated. And similar to the outdoors is what we had already put in our letter. And then both indoors and outdoor students, campers and staff who are fully vaccinated do not need to wear a mask. So. Instantly, we knew we were gonna have, much like any issue that we've had with COVID, we knew we would have people on both sides of, of this issue. We know we have people who are ready to throw the mask in the garbage and never put them on again. And we have other people who feel that we've been open and have been successful because we wore the mask. So we knew it would be a very controversial issue. So then to the, to the next slide. So over the weekend, the Genesee Valley Superintendent Group was. Zooming on Sunday. We're all trying to collaborate and determine what our next steps are. And in that meeting, many of us had already agreed, we can't stop this momentum. It really seems like not wearing masks in school is the direction we're going in. Most of the group is in consensus, that's what we're gonna do. On Monday, we're only gonna have students wearing masks in the hallways or when they're entering school. And then we get the email from the commissioner who says, nope, no changes to your mask policy at all. So in the Zoom meeting, we get that email and it's like, okay, well, so we, we tried to put the brakes on. And then today, Governor Cuomo in his press release says that. Masks outdoors are no longer required. The key piece of that is when Governor Cuomo states that in a press conference. That is not formal guidance. We still have to wait for the executive order before we can truly change our plan. And the, the next bulletin that was also about Robert Zas, who is. New York State Public High School Sports Athletic Association or Schools Athletic Association. Said, no mask also applies to interelastic kind of athletics. So I went back to my original. Thought process of saying, we've removed the masks outdoors because they're no longer tolerable, not because we're changing our policy. But because we are just changing how we're implementing our policy. So now we go on to the next one. So, consistent with New York State guidance and our reopening plans, again, we are. Saying that due to the excess heat and humidity and elevated classroom environmental temperatures, that when students are outside, they can remove their masks. And we still have the availability of teachers inside the classroom to give their masks break. So teachers still have. The authority that when the students are safely socially distanced, they can remove their mask and they are removing their mask when they need. So, again, we are allowing our students and staff to remove their masks outside on school property. We will continue wearing our masks when we're on the buses, in our hallways and while inside our school buildings in large groups. As you said, that we will get together, do this together, but that's what we do, right? We just need to stay fast. By the way, how many, how many days of school are left to have these changes thrown at us at the last minute? Not many. So, um, you know, the, the next area that I wanna talk about is that we do know that we have the federal funds. That we need to have our grant application in by June 15th. That did require us to have stakeholder feedback. So we did send a survey. We had 178 participants. Take the survey, 160 of those were parents and guardians. We had 30 staff members and three community members. And the, the main areas that people felt that we needed to support on the next slide stuff. It was overwhelmingly the number one concern and area that, that our community staff. Felt that we needed to support was mental health, adding mental health staff, adding mental health services. Making sure that our staff and students' needs are being met. So that is something that the admin team and I are really looking at. Different ways that we can increase the services and supports for our, for our staff and students because it was overwhelmingly identified as a need. Support learning loss. Again, this came in lots of different suggestions between tutoring, summer school, after-school tutoring. Lots of suggestions for learning loss, increasing our technology needs and, you know, John would tell you that we. Really increased the amount of hardware that we provided and that has really increased the demand for what his office does. So looking at how we can best support him and Alan as he continues to best meet the needs of our students. Enrichment. We had a lot of people say they really felt that we needed to continue to offer as many of our extracurriculars. And STEAM initiatives to make sure that we have our students engaged and excited. Definitely to have community to ensure that we open five days a week in person. That was also important. A lot of people felt that. We needed to make sure that that is still our plan and it is still our plan. People wanted us to invest in our fine arts program. And number seven, we did have a few people who said, please refund the orchestra program to what it was at in its current status. And prior to the survey going out, I had already reached out to Karen Fanning and set up a meeting. And said, you know, we currently have a new model. You're doing the, the three through five program. We had. Mr. Salino in the middle school, high school. And I said, this year, because we were on a hybrid schedule and we had. We had a lot fewer numbers this year. She was able to meet every student's request to be an orchestra. But she anticipates that when we go back to school five days a week in person, that number's gonna increase. And she wouldn't have been able to, at the current level, meet all those needs. So I've asked for her to put a right proposal in writing. To let me know what she would need to make sure that we are providing orchestra to every student that would want to participate next year. Starting in grades two through five. So this year, we only did grades three through five. But in the past, they have done that mid-year, starting like January, February, where they. Really tried to recruit second grade students and introduce the, the instruments. So I've asked her for a proposal so that we can work together to. Make sure that orchestra is fully supported in the elementary building next year. And then we did have one person say, you know, you have pre-K that is available on a lottery basis, which is true. We can only take eight to the students. I think this year we had 36 people who had, you know, indicated that they were interested in the pre-K program. So, you know, pre-K is an interesting concept because, you know, we have a grant for one classroom. So we just need to look at, you know, is there a possibility of eventually offering that in the future? And, and at this point, I don't know. But those were the different areas and that was from the community and the survey. Both Mike and Kelly have met with their team leaders and provided a very similar list. It really is. It really shows how much in line our community, our teaching staff and the administrative team are with they really. These needs have been identified in every single opportunity that we've asked for feedback. So we will be working hard to try and meet all these various needs. Any questions? Alrighty. So, community relations, Stephanie. Anybody, anybody? Yeah, you're the number one. I thought, oh, so you said something, but that's you. Alright, so we'll move on to committee reports, audit and finance, Mike.
We did meet tonight. We talked through a few topics, computer planning for transportation. Some of the processes around payroll and the federal funds. Ending federal funds. Nothing beyond that to report at this point. We'll meet again prior to. Next month's first meeting.
I think it's safe to say that CES just took a backseat this year. It's official. We didn't really meet this year because we kept hoping we have the ability to have community in and do things with community and that really wasn't. What happened, though we did a lot of, kind of like the surveys and things like that, but that really didn't take our committee to do that. So hopefully that will be picked up again next year. When we can invite more people into the building. GCEF, they continue to meet again offline or online, but off campus, meeting the needs through. People that, the teachers that submit for grants that they might wanna do things in their classrooms and. Are always eager to help in that area.
And Mike and I just recently met with GCEF, a few members of GCEF. And, you know, they actually came up with the idea of changing the focus of, of what their group typically does. They will still take applications from a teacher to provide a, yeah, speaker or a field trip. But really more of that fun to help when a student can no longer afford an opportunity in our school. Really trying to help and support as many of those initiatives and making sure that we are not denying any student access. We're also looking at that as a district. I know that was something that the focus group, economically disadvantaged focus group had looked at. Was identifying different areas that they felt that we as a district need to look at to make sure that we are not setting. Policies or regulations or just procedures in place here at school that are not allowing all students to participate because of an economic need. So we're, we are looking at that as a, as a district as well.
Policy, David.
I'll see, we didn't, we didn't meet this time, but you'll note a couple of items. Eight point oh nine is the second read on the sexual harassment of students policy, required policy. Also, eight point one zero, public access to records, says that's the first read on that required policy.
That brings us back to.
Okay. Under personnel, I'd like to make a motion. We approve items 7.02 through 7.07.
Any discussion on any of those items?
Just as Kelly said, really went to wish Erin One Yardner well as she leaves us sadly, but was on to the next step in her career in administration. So congratulations and you will be missed.
Yeah, congratulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carried.
Under new business, I'd like to make a motion. We approve items 8.02 through 8.10.
Second.
Any discussion on any of these items? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
And, uh, the business office, I'd like to make a motion. We approve items 9.02 through 9.04.
Any discussion on those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Bring this to discussion items, which there is one for the board meeting day. Of, oh, change, meetings on Monday or change to Tuesday? Oh yeah, we've talked about that over here. That's right. It's that time of year. So do people wanna keep the meetings? Once upon a time, we used to have them Tuesday nights. They got changed to Monday nights. Is that pretty good? We're staying with Monday nights?
I am.
Yeah? All right. I guess Mondays it is. And.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. We enter into executive session, uh, for continuing discussion regarding Patrick negotiations in one personnel matter.
Second.
All in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. We're in executive session. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. Steve? Yeah. And Kevin, if you'd like to say, is there any board member, please, or soon to be, fully board member, please stay and join.